And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda in front of us and I think we have a handout on the 312 that came up at the end of the week last week we had under discussion and this is just the actual resolution. We have a motion regarding the agenda.
Move to approve as amended then?
Moral?
Support.
Chris Rhodes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens comments on agenda items during the Open Meetings Act and he says may come forward this time, make common or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person and the citizen comment period will be limited to a total of 45 minutes and one who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Hello, Mary Hess. And regarding the agenda on the community walkable area and your plan, the proposed city strategy plan, you have an area in here of the physical design and walkability of how important it is to have sidewalks safe. We want a walkable community. At June 7th council meeting, Mayor Driscoll stated, "On my concerns of the trip hazards beside Brecken Grille, I support outdoor seating. It shows the vitality of the town." I understand your point of view. You prefer Celine means business. I prefer Celine means home. To me, home is a caring place to all that live there. Safety and well-being are very, very important. I request again that the council addressed the Ordinance, Chapter 744, addressing sidewalks, Section 74-186, duty to maintain sidewalks, Section 74-187, liability of faulty sidewalks. As stated before, I have a five-foot sidewalk in a residential area. City Council has allowed 36 inches and obstacle course in front of Brecken Grille and this side of Brecken Grille. The waitresses at Brecken Grille also use this pathway to take orders and deliver food and drinks. I have received ADA materials if you would like to see them from this government. Bikes have to go over these tree grilles also. Paul, the owner of Brecken Grille, was very upset when I called M.D. and he told me that I'm not welcome in his business. Mr. Grossman, does that mean I can't go into the chained area that the Brecken Grille owner is paying $25 a year for? Being barred from Brecken Grille wasn't high on my bucket list. I guess that's what you call a small area a whistleblower. Paul also stated that Gretchen had looked at it and you didn't see a problem. Councilmember Ping said there are many areas that have three-foot walkways. The right-of-way was about 25 feet before the city council voted to reduce it to a three-foot pathway. We have rails to trails, working on grants for more bike access, and I wish we would return a walkable sidewalk in front and beside Brecken Grille.
Thank you.
May I show you this?
This is from when the fiddlers were there, the stope halfway and all.
There are additional citizen comments? And we have a consent agenda for now. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second? Ms. Ivy, second. Ping. Approve the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In our new business, we have Item 10-100. This is a purchase of new copier and printer for the printer consolidation plan. This motion acknowledged receipt of the June 17, 2010 memo from Technology Support Coordinator Schonk to approve, excuse me, or not approve the purchase of a Conica Minolta Bizhub C652DS from Conica Minolta Business Solution at a cost of $13,512, which purchase is included in FY 11 budget and to approve or not approve the printer consolidation plan to reduce inefficiencies in our copier operations. We have a motion.
Move to approve and approve.
Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. By Little? Mr. Schonk or Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, Chris is here for technical questions if they arise, but we've been working on this for some time now and looking at, we have a number of desktop printers, both in the City Hall administration side, police side, and downstairs. As you can see in the informational memo, we have a list of the number ones that we were planning to maintain and ones that we're planning to eliminate. I will say, we're going to hold on to them and make sure we can hopefully iron out all the bugs, but we're trying to, again, have a quality and efficient machine and get rid of some of these, for lack of a better term, energy hogs and print hogs. But we're also trying to be strategic on where they're placed. For instance, obviously, the clerk's office, they deal with a lot of paper and a lot of memos, a lot of reports, those types of things that continually, so it wouldn't be prudent to remove those. But some other ones that are there for something other than necessity, we're trying to use a new technology, which basically with this new, what I call a workhorse, would be our main copier printer, you can actually send a number of jobs to it and then it stores them there for you and then, so you're not getting up every time. Obviously, there would be no, you'd lose any efficiencies if that were the case, if you had to get up every time you sent something there. But this way, you can send a number of jobs, you can go up and then you punch in your code and you print them off and for confidentiality purposes, for purposes, so yours don't get mixed in with somebody else's and you're running around from office to office to find out where your, you know, paper went or whatever. But we think this is going to be a good quality change, we believe. It is going to be a change, so there's going to be some bugs ironed out, but that's why we want to hold on to this list of what we're proposing to sell at some point. But we think we're going to be more efficient and it's also, there is a color. This printer will be color and right now, for instance, I share one with Justine, my administrative assistant, and that one will be eliminated. It's color, but it's just, it's not efficient. It's very expensive. It's actually one, if not the most expensive, one to print per page and so certainly, we're trying to do what's best for everybody here.
Are there questions? Mr. Ivey?
Mr. Campbell, it looks to me to be a good plan for consolidation. I had one question, though, regarding those that are downstairs. I noticed that Mr. Tillman and Mr. Fordice's printers are on the endangered species list and will they then have a shared printer that currently is being used by Gary? Is that how that's going to work? Or I just had a suspicion of them going up and down steps.
Right, absolutely right. No, and I thank you for bringing that up. I apologize, I should have added that. They have a Bizhub or, you know, as I would call a workhorse down there as well, so they're not, but they would also, they would be able to choose if they wanted to print a color copy, for instance, they could, they'll have it in their network to be able to do, print upstairs, but with Jeff's relocating the DPW, that desktop is no longer needed, so that was kind of, by default, that was going to be eliminated. Tillman, the one he uses, he doesn't need, so we, because we talked about, you know, again, we talked to all the staff and said, we'd have to make some changes here, but let's be strategic about it and what's going to be least harmful, if we will, to productivity and that's what we came up with. So Tillman does not, he can utilize the main one down there as well as they're going to maintain the one at the front window, so they don't have to, like, print out a receipt, for instance, for, you know, for a permit, they don't have to walk all the way back to the end of the office area and then grab it, you know, and so that's how those will work out.
That answers my question. I do have another question regarding Michael. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with Michael.
Yeah, well.
What department is he in?
Yeah, Michael is our administrative intern and that just happened to be the last person that's using that workstation.
I notice he has the highest cost per ream.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was actually, that was our former enforcement officer's cubicle that he's been using and so that's, for, for lack of a better term, we just, that's what we name it as. So, I mean, it's not, that's just where he happens to reside when he's working on projects for us.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
Ms. Ping?
I just have a quick question in reference to what Mr. Ivy was just talking about, the below the line here, is that there's 13 people here and it says the consolidation of 11 printers? I guess, am I reading this wrong, that the ones underneath are the ones that are cut?
Correct. Yeah, I don't know if we just counted wrong. Chris?
There's 13 below that say we're eliminating, so I don't know.
Here, Chris, can you come up?
Yeah, you can come up, yeah.
You need to come to the microphone.
Two of them below the line are actually cheaper than ones above that we're getting rid of, so we're going to move them up. I believe the front copier machine and Kathy Korfman's machine are cheaper than a couple above, so we're moving those up.
But we're going to trade those out.
Right.
So the end game would be 13.
Right.
13, not 11?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. And then what will happen to the 13 printers?
Well, first, like I said, we're going to probably take a good couple of months just to make sure we iron the bugs out and make sure we don't want to, that terrible term, unintended consequences, but the intent would be if it all works well, which we believe it will, but we would get permission from City Council to sell those at eBay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Chris, you might have just answered the question I was going to ask and that was the rationale for maintaining a seven cent per page copier above the line while eliminating some much less expensive below the line.
Right, and that's it. We'll shuffle some of them down below.
Okay.
Further questions? We have a motion on the floor to approve and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-1001, Use of Public Way on Paul Street by First Presbyterian Church. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the application for community event use of public ways from Ginger Limone on behalf of First Presbyterian Church requesting the closure of Paul Street from Michigan Avenue to City Parking Lot Number One from July 19 through 23, 2010, to acknowledge receipt of the June 15, 2010 memo from Police Chief Button, the June 2 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, the June 15, 2010 memo from Fire Chief Teff, to approve or not approve the closure of Paul Street from Michigan Avenue to City Parking Lot Number One on July 19 through 23, 2010, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., subject to the following conditions. One, that the traffic engineer issued a required temporary traffic control orders. Two, that the applicant be responsible for placing and removing the barricades daily for the street closure and that all fees for city services estimated at $80 be waived or paid by the applicant.
Move to approve and waive?
Second? Ms. Little, second. Ping. Discussion? Are there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Rhodes?
Just a question in the application, it talks about the signs being two and a half feet by three. I think they're limited to two by three, six square feet per side by city code, so if they haven't already been constructed, they ought to come down to that size.
They have not been constructed. What is the measurement? Two by three?
Two by three.
Okay.
Or six square feet, so.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 10-103, Peoples Express Public Transportation Agreement. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 17, 2010 memo from Public Works Director Fordice to approve or not approve the purchase of service contract between Peoples Express and the City of Celine for public transportation for a two-year term at a cost of $42,000 per year and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute said contract after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
Move Moral?
Second.
Second Law? Mr. Fordice?
Peoples Express has put together a new contract this, they're proposing a two-year contract this time with a $2,000 per year increase to be held steady for the two years and there have been some modifications to the service area. Overall, I think an increase in available services to our citizens. The previous contract had service to AATA stops in the city of Ypsilanti and those have been kind of lightly used and for their day-to-day service, it kind of stretches them a little bit, so that's been eliminated from this, but service to medical facilities in the Ypsilanti area has been increased under this contract. So now there's direct service to U of M Hospital, St. Joseph Mercy and the VA Hospital as well as numerous medical facilities in the area of St. Joe's, kind of the northern Ypsilanti area. And then a new service that, we had some requests from citizens to provide service to the Domino's Farms area and University of Michigan's East Medical Center campus. Those are, again, further out, further away, so in order to allow Peoples Express to make most efficient use of their resources, those two destinations would require a five-day notice for the trip versus the, I think it's 48 hours for all the other trips. And Mr. Armbruster is here today if you have any questions on what kind of service has been provided, what sort of ridership we've had over the past years or anything for him.
Other questions from council? Ms. Ping?
I think it says it in here, but I just want to confirm that it's no additional cost to any of the riders for the two years.
Right, per trip fees are still $2 in town and $3 out of town.
So, okay, I think that's great. I'm going to be supporting this, but I think that, just wanted to point out that, once again, the city's absorbing the cost and making it affordable for the people who use this transportation to continue to use it.
Mr. Law?
My question was answered.
Mr. Rhodes?
The contract talks about the contractor providing a brochure. Has that been done and are they in fact at various places around town?
I believe it's been done in the past. We haven't prepared one for this contract cycle yet since it hasn't been approved.
We did drop off a updated one about three, excuse me, three or four months ago, but we'd be happy to bring over some more and we'll also be including the new areas and the times it takes to do that at East Side and Domino Farms and that too. And this year, all the figures aren't in, but it looks like you're probably going to have a little over a 10% increase in ridership issue and the cost has come down for your riders, per ride and everything too.
And are the brochures in fact kept at these places that are listed in the contract? By where I walk over there, I find them?
You will, yeah. And I think some are, they were here at the City Hall and Breckenbilly, we have them and Hill Pond Manor and some of the other places, yes.
Okay, and then another question, it says that you're in process of establishing a website?
Yes.
Which I think is a very good thing. Will people be able to make reservations via that website?
Not at this time in the city of Celine. We do have for other areas that we cover, people can access the website for information and things, but it's actually much better if you call and talk directly with one of our call-takers, being the fact that when you have people call in, a lot of them will say, "Well, I want to go to the hairdresser on Michigan Ave." Well, if they did that on the website, you're more than likely, you'd be calling them back anyway. Well, there's a number of hairdressers. Or, "I want to go to a doctor over on Clark Road." Well, that leaves the area pretty wide open, so the call-takers have been with us for about four or five years now and so they know the questions to ask and telephone numbers and things like that. So it works out much more efficiently to do that.
Okay, and then my final question, given that it appears that our ridership is going up, so I'm assuming there'll be more consistency with runs, is there any possibility of reducing that 48-hour advance reservation time down to something more, closer to 24 hours?
It might be possible, but the problem being is that over the past couple of years with the ridership, the aging process becoming, you know, you have more older riders and they require more time going to Ann Arbor and things like that, you're actually up around about 45% of your riders now are actually going to Ann Arbor for doctors' appointments and hospital appointments and things like that. If we can do it, and we do do it, when they call, we'll try and do that, but if we can do, you know, 48 hours, it pretty much guarantees them then that we're going to be able to do the scheduling, but if they call like today at 4 o'clock for tomorrow morning, it makes it pretty difficult to get a ride to Ann Arbor. In town, it's not a problem, but when you go out of town and the ridership has greatly increased going out of town, that's one of the problems. So we're just trying to serve as many people as we can and also, a lot of the riders that go out of town might not necessarily be served by the same driver that took them there. We have other drivers that bring them back, so that helps out too.
Okay. I'm thankful that the city sees fit, as Ms. Ping mentioned, to subsidize the costs to provide transportation for our folks and I would encourage you to continue to do what you can to market that service within our community and to continue to look towards reducing that reservation time when it's possible to do so.
Yeah, we definitely will try and do that the best we can and we really appreciate and it's been a really good experience for us to serve the city of Celine and it's been pretty rewarding with a lot of the seniors and things like that. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Armbruster, thank you for coming. I also had a question about the website. The 24-hour turnaround, can you put on the brochure that if it's in the city, it would be within 24 hours?
Yes.
So one of the issues that has come up in the past is that we don't have public transportation in town, which, as you know, we do. So we are really concerned about the visibility and the marketing. One of the things I was wondering also, and I don't know if somebody at City Hall could assist with that, but just making sure not only these locations, but I think also the library where there's, and I know that, you know, obviously, we don't provide services and provide outside the city limit, so there is going to be some frustration, so maybe if you can highlight somewhere that this is for city residents, but, and then also social services, I don't know if you provide information for them?
No, we don't.
Which is, yeah, I think that would be a really nice, and then I know the hospital has some professional office building and that's a regular routine, so that might be something, you know, in the lobby or you have something already set up there? Great, so, and too, I think the website and we, you know, anything we can do to continue to raise awareness. We talked a little bit, the C manager, I talked a little bit about doing more on our website too, about promoting awareness and maybe trying to do a more regular thing on the website, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Any motion to approve and authorize? All in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ivy, did you have a?
I did.
Yes, you did. I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. I accept your apology. I share Mr. Rhodes' concern regarding the lead time on the reservations and I wanted, if our guest would return to the podium briefly?
Mr. Armbruster? Excuse me, excuse me. We have one more question for you.
Oh, sure.
I apologize. I missed that council member Ivy had a question, so.
I was concerned, I have no problem overall with the purchase of service contract and I support Peoples Express, but I did have a question as to, it doesn't seem realistic to me that you would need five days lead time for a reservation to Domino Farms. Could you help me understand why that would take five days?
Well, right now, you have a big number of people who are already pretty much standing reservations with dialysis, people who are going to Ann Arbor for different functions with mainly around the Briarwood area for therapy and things like that. If you try to throw it in like a day or two, you know, it gets pretty difficult and it may not seem like it does, but it really is a situation that if you have a little more lead time, then you can always usually work it out, not with maybe just that driver, but we can have another driver come here and then take it up there. Most generally, we can do it in less than five days, but to be on the safe side, if you give yourself a little, if you said three days, pretty soon, you know, then you're going to start getting yourself in trouble and people will be very unhappy and you don't want that, so we ask for a little more lead time, that's all, for that, because you add more time to the runs and everything.
You stated that 40% of your ridership are destined for Ann Arbor.
Yeah.
Those from Celine are going to Ann Arbor. And of that 40%, how many are going to the nether regions of East Medical Center or Domino Farms?
Right now, we haven't got anybody going to Domino Farms.
Well, that's true, because this is new territory.
Yeah, that's a completely new area.
Could you estimate how many you think?
Pardon?
Is there an estimate you might have as to how many would actually need to do that?
Boy, this would probably, I would say it would be conservative, but maybe 10 a month.
So we're not inconveniencing a great many people?
No, no. And we wouldn't inconvenience the other people that are going. We'd make arrangements to do something different to get them there.
Very good.
You don't have a lot, a lot of people, but you do have people, especially now, they've moved a number of the areas that they served at the main hospital out to East Side Medical and so I'm sure there's going to be more people wanting to go.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions on the motion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-104, this is a proposed city of Celine strategic plan for 2010 to 2011. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 14, 2010 memo from C manager Campbell and the proposed 2010-2011 strategic plan to approve or not approve City of Celine 2010 to 2011 strategic plan as submitted.
Move to approve.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
You know, the strategic plan is fine. It, you know, it has a strategic document, it has more headlines than substance, but I would like to see a document that says how we're going to do all these things, you know, what steps are going to be taken, what resources will it take and so on and so forth to accomplish these things in this year. I just would like to see how we're going to do all this stuff.
I think that would be in our budget. That would be the budget document, because that's where we do our measurables and our employees and where the costs are associated with different things that we're trying to accomplish in the next year, so.
Well, the other thing is, when you have a strategic plan, you don't have it tied back to a budget document. You need it tied into something that says strategic plan implementation or something, so it's a cozy document.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, do you have any comments? And then we have other questions, I'm sure, from other councilmembers.
We can certainly do our best to, to come up with some of maybe some proposed items that were to try and accomplish these goals and these, in a minute that way, if that's what the council would like to see. But again, the attempt was just as, in the past is to say, here's our, here's the city council's goals and objectives and, and, but again, we can, and again, the thought was that we would come back a few times a year to update, like we've done this past year. But certainly if that's the direction the council must go, we can, we can do our best to put some.
I think you can, when you, the budget and CIP done, I think you can work with that. I mean, I think we can bring it back then. Mr. Little?
Yeah, I mean, here's a statement, increase industrial, commercial properties, investment to offset residential cost of services. What does that mean? And there's, you know, several others.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Campbell, can you talk me through how we as a body or how the administrative staff is going to disseminate this document and, and the narrative to the community? Is it going to be on our website? Are we going to promote it in our FYI? Because I think it, it's a valid document. I think Mr. Little's points are, are, are valid. And I think it's important that our citizens see this and in turn possibly give us some feedback.
Certainly. In the past, like you said, in the recent past, we've done updates. But also we've always put it on the website. And trying to recall, I don't know if we put it in the FYI or not, but certainly that's a good spot to put it as well, once adopted. So, I mean, those would be, I would say, website, FYI, and then periodic reports to council throughout the year would be the places we would, would advertise it for folks to see. But we certainly are open to other, you know, other ideas as well.
Mr. Rhodes?
I, I thought the idea of having a relatively brief document with some graphics on it on our website would probably result in more of our citizens actually reading the document and providing input on it than it would if we tried to put too much support documentation with it. So, I'm okay if it goes on the general public like it is here and then gets fleshed out in our segments.
Mr. Ivy?
I just want to remind everybody that, referring to the conclusion, there's a statement, "The public's input is sought and highly valued." A lot of what is in here is as a result of the survey that we did. Was it 2009?
2008.
2008. And we're due for another survey.
This summer, correct.
So, I, I think that's in, an integral part of, of the development of this report. And, and it will be again when we do our, our next goal-setting session later this year. But as far as following up on Mr. Marl's point about communicating this to the public, I, I would agree that it needs to be, to be highlighted in, in the city website and maybe even in the FYI, if, if we could do that in, in the next edition of the FYI. That's all. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Campbell, do you have any other comments? So, the motion is to read the proposed plan and approve as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next item is 10-105. This is staff appointments and salary adjustments for fiscal year 2011. It's a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 14, 2010 memo from C manager Campbell and the January 5, 2010 letter of attorney Grossman regarding retainer for legal services for fiscal year 2010 to 2011. No motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Move Rhodes, second Marl. Discussion. All in favor to acknowledge receipt, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, a motion adjourned to a closed session for the purpose of conducting a personal evaluation of the C manager with said evaluation being conducted in closed session at the request of the C manager. The city council will reconvene and discuss regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. The road call, but we need a motion.
Move.
Move Rhodes?
Second.
Second, Law?
Councilmember Ivy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ping?
Yes.
Councilmember Law?
Yes.
Councilmember Marl?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Characteristic.
Yes. We adjourn to closed session at 8:05. First item under 10-105 is item A, which is a motion to approve or not approve the staff compensation grid for fiscal year 2010, 2011 as recommended by C manager Campbell and consistent with union contracts.
Move to approve.
Second.
Marl, second, Little? Approve, discussion. Ms. Ping?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Campbell. I know in the past, we would get a packet from Mr. Burgoyne talking about cost of living percentages and this and that. And that didn't happen yet this year, which is fine with me. But you have this year, consistent with union contracts, which is a 3% increase. And so I just wondered if there was a shift in how is, are you just trying to line it up more with that way? Or are you, in the past, it's always been, with the exception of last year, somehow related to, to the cost of living.
Right, right. We've tried to, correct. We've made, we've tried to make it even across the board as best as possible for the non-union as well.
Okay, so this is, I mean, I just want to point out that it is different than in years past. I don't have a problem with it, but, okay. Thank you.
I think the wording is the same, it's the same as last year. I don't know about the year before, so the wording is.
Well, last year, it's because there was no inflation. So, and we gave a 3% increase. But in years past, it was always tied to CPI.
I don't have the motion from two years ago, so anyhow. Okay. Is there any other discussion, Mr. Rhodes?
Do we, kind of following up on Ms. Ping's question there, do we know what the CPI increase was? Cost of living was the actual one that's measured by our federal government?
Not positive. I think it was below 2.
Okay. I'm a little concerned about this, the size of an increase, given the, the numbers of our residents who are still suffering and going through layoffs and getting salary reductions and worst case, suffering through foreclosures. I'm struggling a bit with this. And this is certainly not a reflection at all on the quality or the work that our city staff does, because I think it's all excellent. But I, I'm not sure that I can justify a 3% increase given the overall economic climate that we're in.
That was, I guess the, this is on the agenda this way because it was how we approved the budget. So, if there was some concern, we probably should have been talking about it during the budget process. So, I, I mean, I talked to Mr. Campbell because I wasn't here for that specific work session when we got into the detail, but that was the understanding. And I think that I would speak to personally, I understand the concern about the 3%, but we do have, we have had significant staff reduction and everyone has taken on more workload because of that staff reduction in there. Everybody has been working very diligently to find any areas to control costs. So, that also along with the fact that union contracts through next year are at 3%. And, you know, staff in the past has been the leader on taking the cuts and then the unions don't necessarily always follow. And so the policy in the past has been to follow what the unions have been, been able to negotiate. And we also talked about that this next year would be not the same percentage. That's very clear and that we've already, we've already preliminarily made that clear to the unions. So, I guess the biggest thing is that, you know, if this is a concern, I think we need to be more clear about this at the time we do the budget discussion because it's really difficult to get to the end of June, the end of the fiscal year and say, well, even though this is in the budget right now, and I would like to point out, we do have a 30% fund balance and a lot of that's due to the fact that our department heads and staff work very diligently and cooperatively with cutting positions, doing attrition, shifting positions within internally in the operations to maintain as low a level of cost of operations as possible. And they continue to look at that. So, Ms. Ping?
Like I said, I don't want to be adversarial about this, but Mr. Burgoyne said it at our last meeting and then you just said it, that the staff takes the brunt of the cuts. And I guess I would question what cut they have taken in the last 10, 12 years.
Well, they have taken benefit cuts and they've been the leader in taking benefit cuts. And there have been other, I mean.
We change the benefits for everybody with the exception of.
But they took, they, they took the percentage, the, they took the leadership, they took the advance cuts. In other words, they set the tone for the, the change in the benefits. They took that risk without knowing whether or not we'd be able to be sufficiently negotiated in the unions.
So. So that, that they had to, this, which was applicable this year, where they have to pay 25% of the, or a reduction of $4,000 that gets put into an HSA whether they use it or not. I guess, you know, I, for me, I'm, I don't mean to be adversarial, but I'm a little bit tired of hearing about how staff has taken the brunt of the cuts because really it hasn't happened. And Mr. Burgoyne made reference to the fact that, you know, they took a pay cut. But they, they did and that was wonderful of them to volunteer for it. But that was reinstated, that COLA increase was reinstated and paid retroactively from the beginning of the fiscal year. So, you know, while I, I appreciate that they're willing to do that, to keep saying that over and over, I feel like they've, you know, we, we treat them horribly. And I don't think that we do. I think that we are very respectful. And I think that, you know, for me, I appreciate their willingness to step up and take the lead, but that's what they do. They're the department heads. So, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Marl?
Yeah, Mayor, actually, I wholeheartedly endorse and support your comments earlier. And I, I think that Mrs. Ping and Mr. Rhodes have some legitimate concerns about 3% COLA increase. But in a sense, it's, it's somewhat disingenuous because we are at the 11th hour and this is already in place in our budget. With that having been said, I think it would be prudent and very practical to maybe have a, a in-depth dialogue and discussion about the COLA increases next year during our budget negotiations. But at this point, I think it's important that this package be approved and, and that the motion on the floor be supported. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
I, I agree mostly with what councilmember Marl said. And it does point out, I believe, that at least I for one need to pay more attention to this particular portion of our budget work sessions. Because it doesn't seem to me that I recall us having any in-depth discussions about this. It just sort of came through and went on past. So, I, I will support this reluctantly because of where we are. But I'm going to pay more attention to it next year in our budget sessions.
Mr. Law?
Well, I'll just simply say that if you have good people, you pay them what you think they deserve. And the staff, as we've said before many times, are top-notch. And so I have no qualms paying them what they deserve. And I'm not against at all reinvestigating this next year when it comes time to the budget to consider COLA again. But as Mr. Marl said, to change it now is, is not prudent. But I'll also say that 3%, I believe this staff deserves it.
Okay, further discussion? Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the compensation grid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, we have a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing staff and sending their compensation for the period of July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011. With the, with the change, let me just say that under Mr. Rubel, he has a trunk line maintenance superintendent description and that actually will be moved to Mr. Fordice's position. So.
Yeah, say that one more time, Mayor.
The trunk line, so under Gary Rubel? Oh, 105B.
Trunk line maintenance superintendent under Rubel goes up to Jeff Fordice.
Thank you.
So, with that change or change of text line, we had a motion, Mr. Marl?
I did not move that, Mayor.
Mr. Little?
Mr. Little approved the resolution? And Mr., or, excuse me, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Second, Marl. And I apologize, you know, I did want to point out in that last motion, which I don't know, but the, we're talking about a $52,000 budget for the, that step, the COLA analysis. So, it was pointed out in Mr. Campbell's memo. And I also would suggest that Mr. Burgoyne come, I mentioned, took a city clerk that he'd be here for, because some of those questions we couldn't, I couldn't answer personally. Okay, so we have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution with a change. All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ping.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to point out that the, while the employees are getting the 3% COLA, that people who are not eligible for COLA are also getting a merit award, either 1,000 or 2,000. And that people who are eligible for step increase, I think that everybody who was eligible for one received one. So, the actual raise for these employees is somewhere between 5 and 6%. So, I just wanted to point that out. So, it's not that they're only getting COLA increase or, you know, but the, the people who are eligible, who are not eligible for a step increase who are at the top of their grade are getting the merit bonus. So, it is bigger than it, than what was discussed in our last motion. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution with the adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitting, submitted, appointing city officers for the period of July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011 to acknowledge receipt and reading ordinance number 729 in order to amend the C, the Celine City Code fixing the current compensation of appointed officials to approve and adopt or not adopt, set ordinance number 729 as amended with insertion of the salary for C manager of 104,878. Do we have a motion?
So, move to approve and adopt and approve and adopt.
Ms. Ping, to approve and adopt. Approve and adopt, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Law? Discussion?
I have one more thing. I just want to say, you know, I'm not, we budgeted for, for these numbers and so I'm not opposed to these numbers. I just want to make it very clear to the public what we're doing. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on this motion? Mr. Law?
Well, I just wanted to again point out the, the staff that we have here at the city is, is, is top of the line. And that is certainly reflected on the, the head of that department and the head of the city staff, and that's the city manager. And certainly he deserves a lot of the praise, if you will, for the way the city has functioned and how things have proceeded. And certainly he, as he's heard me say to him already, I think he's done a great job and very pleased to have him back for another year.
Mr. Marl?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to second what my colleague, Mr. Law, just said. We are really blessed and our citizens need to know that we have a, a tremendous city manager, someone who's creative and thinks outside the box and is incredibly effective. manager, someone who's creative and thinks outside the box, and is incredibly effective. However, he would not be nearly as effective if he wasn't surrounded by the outstanding, extraordinary staff that is subordinate to him, and like Mr. Law said, we really are blessed. And, you know, I see on the TV of late that, you know, government officials, be it appointed or elected, have taken a beating, and there are certainly people who abuse the public trough, if you will, but most people who serve in government are good, decent people, and that's certainly true in Celine, and we are very blessed, and our citizens need to know that, and they need to feel fortunate that we have assembled such an effective team here serving them. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there further discussion on this motion? We have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution, and approve and adopt the ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to approve or not approve employment contracts with appointed staff and officers for the period of July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011, to authorize or not authorize the mayor, clerk, and city manager to execute the employment contracts as submitted.
Move to approve.
Move, Marl. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Law, discussion? It's approve and authorize, correct?
Yes, sir.
Discussion?
I'll just put in my two cents on how much I enjoy working with the city manager, and again, as we discussed earlier when we were doing his evaluation, that we felt very strongly that he's done an excellent job, and he recognized the department heads and the people that support him in his efforts to run the city well. And again, as I said in an earlier motion, keeping the budget in line and doing the long-range planning for operational efficiencies and keeping our costs in line while still having a growing city with a good quality of life is a pretty fine line, fine balance, and I think it's due to the experience and the leadership of our city manager and our department heads. We have quite a few department heads that have been with the city for many years and provide a very high level of experience and actually leadership, not only in the city, but in the county and also in the state, and I think we're very fortunate that way. So, city manager Campbell, keep up the good work, and we look forward to another year working with you.
Is there further discussion on this motion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have commission committee reports from council members. Mr. Ivy.
The Celine Parks Commission met on Tuesday, June 15, and the topic of conversation was this year's Green Thumb Award, which is sponsored by the Parks Commission. The purpose of the Green Thumb Award is designed to recognize residents and businesses in the city who have taken the extra effort to make their property a little more attractive for all to enjoy, and we are encouraging all citizens to go and look around, and if you see appeals to you, if property has curb appeal, if there are interesting flower boxes, if you see a garden that, in your view, is deserving of recognition, we encourage you to nominate that resident for the Green Thumb Award. We'll be accepting nominations through the month of July, and you can pick up nomination forms at City Hall, at the Celine Rec Center, or you can find them on the city website. They can be faxed in, or they can be mailed to the Rec Center. So please, if you see somebody's property that looks to you like it deserves a little recognition, take a few minutes, fill out the form, and let's recognize them. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other commission committee reports. Ms. Ping.
The Arts and Culture Committee was the meeting for, June was canceled, and the senior center, Carol Christensen, is retiring, and they are not going to be replacing her position, so they're just going to move some people around in order to make sure that the budget can operate in a fiscally responsible way. So they're, they've already made some changes, so they won't be replacing the full-time position. They'll have, right now, they have a part-time person and a college intern that are working there, so they'll do something similar in the fall when the intern goes away. And the Environmental Commission met. We hope to have the survey to Mr. Campbell for his review of the city department heads, and it was actually a really amazing survey. The results are very clearly spelled out, and Megan Lazar, who's not on the commission anymore, has actually been assembling that, and she's very pregnant, so she wasn't able to come to our last meeting, and so I'm not sure she's going to be here next month either, depending on when the baby comes, but hopefully, we'll have that sooner than later. The survey is done. She was going to work on the cover sheet to get it to Mr. Campbell so that he could review it and get it to council. The Environmental Commission also, last year, requested in its budget $5,000, and the reason for that large budget was to try to obtain some recycling containers for the downtown area, and we've done lots of investigating, and it's kind of coming to a head. Unfortunately, they won't, we won't be able to do it before the end of this fiscal year. This year's budget was approved at $2,500, and out of that $5,000 budget, there's about $3,600 left. So Environmental Commission is going to be coming back to council to ask for an amended budget, to see if they can roll some of that into next budget year to pay for the cost of the recycled containers, and it looks like whatever we end up with is something that's going to have removable sides, so we can put things to promote either be Celine or, I don't know, when I saw the memo from Cindy about colors, you know, they don't have to be ugly, big ugly green.
And we need to, we can talk about, we need to make sure that we're coordinated with the downtown merchants and the...
Right, so that's why we've run out of time for this budget year, so we're asking, we're asking for an extension so that we can make sure that the colors and, you know, that it's going to fit in, and it's not going to be an ice or like our current trashcans are. So, I mean, the Environmental Commission is very much aware of placement and colors and how it's all going to fit in to enhance the downtown, not detract from it, so. And then, and we'll also be doing the storm drain markers again this summer. We did it two years ago for the storm drains that don't have the little fish on them that's imprint, imprinted on it. We're putting those in the older subdivisions and then areas where they have been worn off from the weather. And our, I think that's it. Scott Goodrich stepped down. That was his last meeting, so we'll be having a new chairperson. We're also moving the night of the meeting to Tuesday, so that's pretty much it from the Environmental Commission. Thank you.
Any other commission reports? Mr. Little.
Yeah, July 16, 17, Celine Celtic Festival. There's over 20 locations. Get advanced tickets and save some bucks, but you can go to the website and volunteer to work at the festival for a few hours, and you get in for free. So we can always use more volunteers, although there's lots, but we still could use more. And the festival committee is working daily, and it's, so it's going to be a good festival.
Thank you. Any other commission reports? Community reports? Reports and other announcements? Mr. Law.
Something I wanted to add in before I forgot about the, we've been meeting about the ICE Fest, that we've had a couple of meetings already, a small group of, oh, speaking of volunteers there, with some ideas, along with our trap downtown director, and some of the things we've been batting around are just, you know, very preliminary, but we're talking like a pancake breakfast to start things off, ice sculpturing, utilizing some of the areas around downtown, and Henny Field, perhaps, that small hill to use as a, sort of like a human bowling kind of thing, where you, whatever. Throwing those things out, I can't think of anything else. Maybe like a snow shoe race, if there's enough snow, a snowman building contest out in front of the Union School. A lot of ideas that are just coming in that we're just going to, we're going to meet on Thursday and talk about that a little bit more. We're also hopefully tying in the ice rink, and somehow, we've been talking with the schools about where that might be placed, and we're talking about other areas as well that would be, you know, centrally located, that people could have access to, and it would be close to downtown, hopefully, that we could do something with, so, but that's all in the planning stages, so I just thought I'd update council on what's been happening with that.
Mr. Rhodes.
This Saturday, the 26th of June, is another community walk, as always, starts at 9:00 in the morning, South Ann Arbor Street, outside of Farmer's Market, and is about a 40, 45-minute recreational walk, so you get a chance to meet and greet other people and see some parts of the town that you might not normally get into. And on the subject of the Farmer's Market, the Tuesday Farmer's Market seems to be doing well at the Celine District Library. The report is that there are a lot of people who are coming to that who don't attend the Saturday one for one reason or another, and some of them weren't even aware that there was a Saturday one, which always kind of amazes me how we get information out within our community, but, so anyway, we have the two Farmer's Markets, one on Saturday downtown from 8:00 in the morning until noon, and the other on Tuesday evening at the Celine District Library from 4:00 in the afternoon until 8:00 in the evening. Thank you.
I just report on, we had two events this weekend, a concert Friday night, movie in the park, and it's really well-attended, the concert, and then, actually, movie downtown was moved because of severe weather to Union School, but I think it was a great combination. Brought in a new group of combining the two and having families come to the concert part, and then Sunday was the Father's Day sports car to Celine, and the River Valley Corvette Club did that, and they were really, the turnout was great, and they were really happy with the outcome, and they are very interested in doing it again next Father's Day, so I think that we have a pretty event that's going to continue to go on downtown, and the good news about that is the majority of it is new volunteer base, because we keep using the same people, so anybody that wants to volunteer, we need you, because it's, we can never have too many volunteers, and it's a lot of fun, so I'm delighted to say that they are really excited about coming back next year, and it's a minimal amount of city support and merchant, you know, downtown merchants support, I mean, there are some, but it's a lot less than a normal event that we do downtown, so, I don't know, are there other reports or announcements? Color, Cindy couldn't make it. She had a conflict past this. This is basically the color that we're thinking about adding. It's a, it's a dark plum color. It's already in, on some of the infrastructure that's already downtown, and we started with a, the BDA has a subcommittee of people that do physical, look at physical improvements. We were talking about trashcans, so we need to make sure there's some overlap there. Mr. Fordice knows, because we walked with him, but the trashcans are on the top of our list, and then also the benches, that a lot of them are really worn and need to be painted, and so we were talking about the green, there's actually two greens right now that are out there, and it's a pretty well-used color by other communities, and we thought this would be a unique color. It's actually this one that's folded over, so it's a dark color. The idea would be to add a new color, and it would be a little bit different than your typical downtowns. See if your color's green.
It's sort of a burgundy, right?
Yeah, it's a plum, deep, yeah, burgundy or deep plum color. The BDA met last week, and the reason that we didn't have a form, we didn't do a formal motion, and I know Jeff has expressed some interest at some point in starting to pull apart some of the benches, because they're, they are really, there's a few that are really in pretty bad shape, so that's the concept that BDA was unanimous about that. And also, the person that's the chair of our BDA right now, I think we're really fortunate, because she actually is, works for a nationally recognized firm and consults with downtowns all over the state of Michigan, certainly, but I know she goes to national conferences, and she really has a good understanding of what makes a downtown strong, healthy, and unique, and viable, and so she's been, you know, we're getting her for free, because she lives in the Celine area, so I think we're really fortunate, and there's a lot of ideas going on with that group as far as, were you at the meeting?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, there's a lot of different things going on. We're still studying the pavilion, there's a, the business recruitment is still ongoing, so there's a lot of different areas that people are working on. So that's my report on the downtown color. Mr. Little.
Not about the color, but who's doing the flowers at the lot behind the Presbyterian Church? And I don't remember these lots, one, two, are red or green, but...
That's Heritage, I think.
The church?
No, Heritage.
Who's doing it? Heritage?
Heritage landscaping.
They're doing a great job. It really is a nice-looking thing.
They're doing, actually, aren't they doing the majority of our lots at this point?
They are.
I mean, the selection of plantings and...
So the other thing, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we are, we're trying to transition to those hanging baskets, which are costly, and, you know, because we haven't been able to implement the streetscape that we were looking forward to, you know, and that is going to be, I think, a few years off, because there's no money in transportation funding. You guys already know that, so anyhow, so we are moving towards that, and I think, you know, there is some talk, I don't know how it's gelling yet, because, but there is some talk about, you know, how we had to sponsor the tree lights. I'm looking towards trying to get a sponsor hanging baskets and really get that, because it actually has a pretty great impact, but they're costly, and it's going to take time to, it's just sort of how we did with the tree lights, that it takes time to really flush that out on the north, North and Southian Arbor Street, and then along Michigan Avenue too also, so...
Mayor, I've actually gotten a lot of positive feedback about those hanging baskets downtown, and they are very attractive.
Great, great. Okay.
Ditto.
Sorry?
I said ditto.
Oh, okay. And then, I think, do we, and so that's about it on downtown, and then the 312 binding arbitration issue, which I know some of you got legislative alert last week from the league, and I asked Mr. Campbell to put this on to talk about and then possibly do a resolution, because, you know, one of the things that we've talked about before, it goes on in Lansing, is they are trying to be helpful sometimes, and what they end up doing is making our life much more difficult, and I know we, this council knows that 312 is already a significant problem for local governments, because we have very little ability to, with negotiations. It can turn into a really tough situation pretty quickly, so what this, we had hoped, the league had been pushing for changing 312 to be beneficial to local governments, and actually, it's gone the other way, and Mr. Campbell, if you want to talk about that a little bit, and then we have a resolution that I can read. I also would like our citizens to know about this, because I think it's really important that citizens, you know, we want safe communities, but we also want, you know, low taxes, you know, we want all these things, and we want safe communities, but the 312 is going to cause us to have, you know, could have our costs go up significantly, and so across the state, and that's not something that we are in a position to... Yes, Mr. Little?
Just commenting, Public Act 312 was instituted as a good idea, because there was threats statewide, and in many states, on the part of some public safety, mostly fire departments, that they were going to go on strike, and some did, and so legislation came through that this, that they would not go on strike and could not go on strike, but that all contracts were subject to mediation and an arbitration and/or an arbitration. No, mediation then an arbitration, and that was quite a while ago, and things change, and...
69.
This, this is not, this current proposal before the state is, serves nobody well, except maybe if your union feels it's, it might be beneficial, and that's about it.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, do you want to talk a little bit about what the proposed legislation is and why we're opposed to it?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, and certainly, Councilmember Little summarized it very well there as far as what it is and why we have it, but again, it has been a couple things, I'll try and be succinct here, but a couple items that are, the league, as well as a lot of communities, have been pushing for, for a number of years to amend this, is our ability to pay, as well as, I mean, so individual communities are different, so their ability to pay, and then also internal comparables to compare other positions within an organization, within a community. Excuse me. The big one, though, is the ability to pay, and oftentimes, I mean, you have a arbitrator that is assigned to arbitration when there's an impasse between the union and the city, and they may or may not be familiar with your community, its ability to pay, but there have been... with your community, its ability to pay. But there have been, there actually have been instances where an arbitrator has said in their final opinion, well, certainly the community had, this particular community has shown us and proven without a doubt that they do not have the additional monies to make, to satisfy or be able to pay for the proposed increases. However, having said that, we believe this particular community's management team is top-notch and they will find the money someplace that we find in favor of the union. That to me, you know, is incredible that someone, a professional would use that as justification to award, to award an arbitration claim to either party. But that, again, the biggest thing is, is the ability to pay. However, the current, this Senate Bill 1072 that have, the city council has before for consideration to support or not, is, is sponsored by Senator Randy Richardville, our senator, Adam Monroe. And hurts us a couple, one, it does not, has, has no language talking about an ability to pay, does not have any language about internal comparables. In addition to that, it does two things. It expands the ability for Public Act 312 to include authorities like fire authorities or fire boards, police authorities, those types of things. So that to me, to me is, is not a positive thing. This, the other thing it does, it shortens the amount of time for an arbitration to go forward. Typically, they can last somewhere between 12 and 18 months. Well, now, I believe, if memory serves correct, I believe it talks something about limiting it to 180 days, six months. And they, and even the, the House did their independent review, the legislative analysis by the House Fiscal Agency, they even say in there that, that it's a positive because it should save cities money because it's a less amount of time. Well, I can tell you from listening and talking with a number of folks around the state, that's actually opposite because a lot of, I mean, us included, I mean, we've been fortunate and blessed that we haven't, and I hope we'll never, won't have to go to arbitration. But those that do, a lot of them are, we don't have a full-time, you know, on-staff attorney. You know, we contract with, with our city attorney as, as do a lot of communities our size or smaller or even larger. And they bring in the attorneys as they're getting into the heat of the battle, as it progresses. And they're able to do internal things to save money. Well, if you're all of a sudden now gonna take eight, 12 to 18 months and consolidate it into six months, that's gonna be many more hours that the attorneys are gonna have to, to help us get things done. And they won't be doing that for free. And they shouldn't be. I mean, those are billable hours. So that's, that's another concern that that's actually gonna, you know, again, as I mentioned earlier in a comment another, about those copiers about the unintended consequence. Well, unintended consequence is probably gonna do just the opposite and cost more. I think that's, those are the, the major items in this proposed legislation. Now that there is, I will say, and I think I misplaced it, there is another in the House. It's not, it's been around for at least a year, I think now. Representative Haveman out of Holland has put together some proposed, proposed amending language that does speak to about the, the ability to pay and internal comparables and that type of thing. But that is continuing for right, wrong, or different, that's continuing to wallow in committee. And I don't see that it's gonna come out of committee anytime soon. But this, I would, all I would say is, I guess to end, to summarize this, Senate Bill 1072 is more of a detriment than a help in moving 312 forward.
Mr. Little?
Just on paragraph five, there's a typo, there's a comma after two in that 2,000 or what's a year.
We're gonna delete five that doesn't really belong in this...
Well, it takes care of the typo, doesn't it?
Yeah, sorry. I just, to add to what Mr. Campbell said, thank you for, I think that was very thorough. One of the issue, you know, public safety is the major item in a, in a city's budget. It's, you know, in a city's budget, the majority of the budget costs personnel, right, employees. And then the majority of the costs divvied down between the departments is the police. So this, this actually, I think, has really significant ramifications, not only for Celine, but cities across the state. Or there are cities across the state that are bankruptcy and bankruptcy. And yet, this is gonna be, you know, so, I mean, I was actually really shocked that this came forward the way it did. And I mean, one of my questions is, and I don't know if anybody has talked to, I have not personally called Senator Richardville since this came out on Thursday. But, you know, this whole discussion about not putting mandates on local government, I would say that this is a mandate. And, you know, didn't they do, isn't there, didn't they say that they weren't gonna do that? And, I mean, this is totally backwards from what they said they would, you know, they're, I mean, they're already cutting revenue sharing. And anyhow, Mr. Marle, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly endorse this resolution. And I think reform to Public Act 312, binding arbitration is, is vital. What I would recommend to my colleagues and to any of you who are in the audience tonight or watching from home is that my understanding from some well-plugged-in, juiced-in sources is that this Senate bill is gonna move very quickly in the House. It could be voted on this week. And if that is the case, the word is that the governor will sign it. So this could be the law of the land in Michigan by mid-July perhaps, if some sort of ground swell, grassroots enthusiasm is generated in opposition to this bill. The real tragic thing here is that reforming 312, you know, Michigan faces a whole host of problems and dilemmas, and many of them are not quick or easy fixes. This, reforming 312 would be relatively easy. It, the issue is not legislation. It's, the issue is the lack of political courage and resolve to do it. So it is important that municipalities like Celine pass these resolutions. And to my colleagues on the dais and to those in the audience, it's important that we contact our elected officials and, and let them know that this will hurt the city of Celine. It will hurt many communities, both smaller and larger than us throughout the state of Michigan. So it is, it is vitally important.
To that point, could you, could we put this on the city website first thing tomorrow so that people, I'm not gonna read it because I think it's, you know, I mean, I guess I could.
Would you like me to read it?
No.
No.
Pretty technical. Basically, what it's, you know, anyhow, so, okay. But I think it would be helpful to say, you know, put it on the website so people could actually read it and be easier to remember and see. So, but I did mention that we are gonna delete the fifth paragraph because that actually doesn't belong in this resolution. And so I would need a motion to adopt the resolution regarding Public Act 312 and forward to our state representative and any other parties in Lansing that, as deemed appropriate.
So?
Second?
Mr. Little, second ping. Did you catch that motion?
Okay.
Okay, is there a discuss, further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, I asked Mr. Campbell if you could talk about, you know, I know Mrs. Hess is here to hear about our update from, you know, the situation. I appreciate Mrs. Hess, your concern about safety. Our city is very concerned about safety. And we, I know that Mr. Campbell, I personally went out the next day, and I know Mr. Campbell and Mr. Fordyce went out and looked at the situation. On the picture you passed around during the concert series, actually the whole street's open. So maybe the sidewalk, there were some people sitting like on the bench, but the actual street is open. So the sidewalk actually is a much bigger sidewalk for when we have concert series. While it may be a little more crowded on the sidewalk, there is plenty of room on the street. So Mr. Campbell, could you talk to the, where we stand today on the issues that were brought up?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you mentioned, that DPD Director Jeff Fordyce and myself, we did walk up and we took a look at both sides, the Michigan Ave as well as the South Ann Arbor, as well as the, the walk, the alleyway behind Dan's, which we have an easement and agreement that we are responsible for some of that maintenance. And so I know Jeff is currently working on costing out some plans to alleviate some of those trip hazards because there are some breaks, there are some issues. We didn't, on the Michigan Ave side, didn't appear to be any tripping hazards. There is certainly one on, on South Ann Arbor Street that we are working towards. And the other thing we're looking at are the grates. I mean, it is within ANC as well as Michigan Building Code for the 36-inch clearance to utilize that. However, we are looking at, if, the tree grates on the east side of South Ann Arbor are small, have smaller holes, if you will, smaller spaces. But we're, we're looking at a couple of things. I don't, I don't believe Jeff has the numbers yet. But we are looking at, at different grates as well as potentially handicap accessible grates so people can traverse that safer and easier. But that is where, where we're at currently. And we hope to have that soon to be able to do that. But one of the, I can tell you, one of the projects, like for instance, at Dan's, we're trying to do as efficient in the term value engineering as we can because if you look at it, we could actually start tearing out a bunch of concrete to make, but we don't wanna do that if we don't have to. So that's one of the things, taking a little bit of time is to have a thorough evaluation so we can be cost-efficient in what we do as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Campbell? Okay, thanks. Any other discussion items? Mr. Campbell?
Just really quick, I know we're, I was getting late and I apologize for that. Something that came up, and I apologize, Mayor, I didn't even get a chance to ask you. But the, you all may recall the Complete Streets Ordinance Project, the grant that we have. And part of that is, is setting aside, is working on drafting an ordinance as well as we're also taking a portion of that and drafting two or three, or, or working with a engineering firm to draw up, design two or three projects from the non-motorized master plan that was adopted this past November. So they're on the shelf, if you will. But this is, again, this is all covered.
Grant.
I'm sorry, right.
Talk about the grant.
But this is covered by the grant that we did receive, not just writing the ordinance, but also designing these two or three projects. So what we'd like to do is have two council members, city councilmen who serve on a, a, a work team or work group committee to review the, the non-motorized master plan and come up with those two or three projects. Along, we'd have staff that would work as well. So if anybody's interested.
Okay. Glenn, because you're on planning, I don't know if you were pat to, I don't know. I was parked, I don't know. So anyhow, if you want to get back to Mr. Campbell, you need to know that by...
Yeah, we'd like to, what we'd like to do, I'd say by Wednesday at the latest, what we'd like to do is make sure everybody has that. I believe everybody has a copy of it or access to one. But we'd like to have you all, have all of us, they'll be on the group to review. And then we'll have, we'd like to have a meeting next week. Reason being, it's a pretty, this grant process is pretty, yeah, September. So we've gotta have, yeah. So we've gotta, it's gonna take, I don't, you know, we wanna do it right. And, and it's gonna take a little bit of time. We can certainly do it, but we do have to expedite some things. So please let me, just shoot me an email or give me a call. I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
You can put me down as a representative from Pubs.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Public comment on the Opening Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, thank you so much for addressing the concern. I had a couple, I noticed out in the lobby, they have non-motorized transportation plans. And it tells about the grates and how drainage grates, inlets, and utility covers can be problematic problems to bicycles and pedestrians and should be kept out of pedestrians and bicycles' expected path. So I really still have a concern with the grates as it is in here, that to try and get more pedestrians, is it possible that the tables, as far as the Brecken grill, could be put on the grates so that the people can have a safe towards the building walkway? And I still wonder why it's three feet instead of five as the other outdoor cafes have. In the strategy plan, it talks about walkable. And I, I appreciate your input. But I still feel that the three-foot opposed to everyone else's five and five and a half to six-foot walkway is still much safer. And if they could, if you could do on the curbside and also allow the three feet without pedestrian, you know, without the waitresses delivering and using up that area. Thank you for your kindness.
Thank you.
How expensive are these?
We're studying it still.
Pardon?
We're studying it still.
Oh, so until that time, will we have more walkway until you study the grates?
I think we approved the plans the way they are currently. So we're looking at options. But right now...
Okay. Because the two tables in the front of Michigan Avenue with the four chairs would be fine. It's the four tables with the pathway between the tables that are three foot wide that take up that safety area. But two would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comment? If not, is there any other business coming for the City Council?
Rejourn.
What?
Oh, sorry.
Your next meeting, July 12th. And that will be the week of Celtic Festival. And the week after July 4th, we have a big event in Celine on July 1st, besides the Friday Night Concert Series. July 1st is the Bid for the Cure downtown. And I don't know if there's any other events between now and July 12th besides that and the Friday Night Concert Series. But you can check out peaceceline.com. What?
Nothing. No, it's okay.
Mr. Law reminded me that between now and our next council meeting, we will also be celebrating Canada Day.
Whatever. Oh, okay. What day is that?
This is important.
July 1, July 1st, right?
July 1st.
Yeah. I remember I drove through Windsor on Canada Day once. I had no idea. So anyhow...
It's an important holiday.
It is. Okay, so we need a motion adjourned at 9:26.
So moved.
Second?
Move ping, second. Ivy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.